All right.
Welcome to the June twenty-seventh meeting of the Green Castle School Board. And let's bring the meeting to with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Gibbene.
Yep, so one item that to add that everybody board members with is a proposal from New Era Technology to for the high school intercom and clock refresh that's a part of the big project. We invited three vendors to submit bids and we need to, I'd like to move forwards with approving their bid tonight so that way we can maintain our intercom and our bell system in our high school, which I'm sure our teachers and students will appreciate. So we'd like to get that approved tonight. So it's my request we add that to the agenda.
All right. All right. Okay, so next is.
Do we need a motion?
Do we, do we, do we to add that?
Let's, let's make a motion to add it as item H. How's that?
All right, add item H. So we have a motion and a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, motion passes. So next on the agenda is public comments regarding agenda items. Are there any public comments regarding agenda items? All right, in silence as well. Okay, next on the agenda is recognitions, Mr. Gibbene.
Yeah, so we have one of our guests with us, distinguished guest. But we'd like to recognize Dr. Robin Johnson for forty years of service. And that's just an amazing accomplishment and definitely something that we don't see all too often in education. It's a rarity. And so we appreciate your commitment and everything that you've done for our students and school community. And certainly we wish for you to be a continued part of our school community. And Mr. Rogers, would you be willing to present Dr. Johnson with her plaque?
Thank you. I'm hoping that goes there.
I know.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, it is. Backdrop. Yep, it's in the lobby. And you also get your, your gold pass for, so you can come, your complimentary entrance to GCSE events.
Your micro pass, yes, I will.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And unable to, to be with us tonight, but certainly another great accomplishment nonetheless. Elizabeth Spencer, for thirty-two years of service, she's also retired from GCSE. And we definitely thank her for her many years of service and what she has done for students. And definitely wish her well in her retirement and hope to see her around as well.
All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. And so first we have the meeting minutes from May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two for the executive session meeting minutes.
Make a motion to be approved.
We'll, we'll take them all together.
We'll just. And then we have the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty regular board meeting. And then we have the allowance of claims, Mrs. Roma.
Yes, in your finance packet you'll see two regular payrolls for the month of May. The first one was dated May thirteenth. And beginning last month, we now have the details of the payrolls, which you've seen there. Did anyone have any question about the details of the payrolls?
Is this something we're gonna have for now on?
You will, per State Board of Accounts in our last audit, so. So the, the first payroll for May was dated May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two for a total payroll of four hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents. And as usual, we've got accounts payable for payroll taxes and retirement. Total for, for those items was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six twenty-three, twenty-six. The second payroll in May was dated in May twenty-seventh for a total payroll of four hundred forty-one thousand, thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents. And along with that can be accounts payable for payroll taxes and retirement, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, thirty dollars and sixteen cents. And next in your packet you'll see the prepays for the month of May. Total prepays, three hundred and sixteen thousand, four sixty-eight, seventy-four. There's really nothing unusual on this list. As you can see, energy costs are up just a little bit in the last couple of months. It's, we've had a hot couple of months too. And then we had three payrolls in April, so of course the state and local taxes were a little bit higher that we paid for April. So those will be a little bit higher for, for the month of May. And then we're ready to move on to the regular claims dated today?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. We've got a packet of regular claims here for you dated June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Did anyone have any questions about any items for this month? I did not.
I do not. I haven't done.
Okay, all right. Total claims dated for today, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, two hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and twenty-seven cents. And we're ready to go ahead and move on to the fund report. Balance in Education Fund, two million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, six eighty-three, fifty-nine. Balance the end of May twenty-twenty-two for operations, six hundred forty-two thousand, six eighty-three, eighty-eight. If you go ahead and go to the last page, which is page five, total for all funds is six million, five twenty-five, seven seventy-two, forty-one. And then next in your package you're gonna see the depository statement and bank balances for all banks ending May twenty-twenty-two. You see the bank balances there at the top. The second rows you're going to see the outstanding checks. So bank balances minus the outstanding checks gives us a balance in all funds in all banks of six million, five twenty-five, seven seventy-two, forty-one. If you look at the last page of the fund report, you'll see that those both balance. And then again, per State Board of Accounts, we've got, and we, last month was our first month doing this. Anytime I do a transfer in between funds, you need to acknowledge that and sign off on it. So you'll see the fund transfer postings for any fund transfers that I made this month. And they are all individual, but then they'll be the final page, that will be the total of all the transfers. It's no negatives, they should all balance out, okay? Anytime I transfer from one fund to another, that should never affect our final balance, okay? So the total that I was, that I transferred this month from one fund to another was two hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and seventeen cents. And then next in your packet, you're gonna see the expenditures for the month of June out of bond twenty-twenty-one. Balance forward from May twenty-twenty-two was three million, eight fifty-nine, nine eighty-four, sixty-four. You've got your expenditures for June twenty-twenty-two. Our total expenditures to date out of bond twenty-twenty-one, three million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. And I think that might be it. Pending any, pending any questions, I'd like to submit for approval.
With the site of our building missing, I imagine that three million's gonna go up here.
I was actually thinking the same thing today when I was reviewing it, so it's probably gonna go up pretty quickly.
I will make a motion.
Well, we also have the personnel report.
Yep, we do.
Oh, not bad.
So there are personnel reports, one and two, which are online and they're also posted on the door. So if anyone has any questions about those or would like to review those. So with that, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I would finally like to make a motion to accept the consent.
All right.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right, motion passes.
And so like to welcome, hi everyone, to Becky McPherson and her family. Becky is, was just approved as Green Castle Middle School Principal.
Yep.
All right, welcome. So moving on to reports from the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. French.
Hi, good evening. So I just wanted to touch base on a few things this summer. So this month we wrapped up our STEM camp on our first, hopefully first annual tradition here for the FabLab facility. And so I like the, the procedure and the setup that we, we created. We had high school and middle school teachers that were interested in applying or using the FabLab in the fall come to a two-day bootcamp this month. And then they had the opportunity to immediately apply that because they volunteered to work the student STEM camp. And so they had a chance to actually work with kids over what they just learned on the, the laser cutter and the 3D printers and, and all of that. So great feedback from everyone. We had just under twenty students. But from the kids, from the teachers, it really built some momentum and some excitement around that. So we're really excited about that. Hopefully that can continue as a kind of a general summer thing we can scale up. So we're, we're excited about that. Also this fall, we're gonna be kicking off our elementary reading adoption for all of our K-5. That's an entire year-long process. So that'll be made up of committee of teachers and administrators. We'll also send invites to the board at different points along the way of that process. But the goal is to have a recommendation and ask for your approval early in the spring for our K-5 reading adoption. We're also going to be looking at updating our math curriculum at the middle school. That'll be a much smaller process as we're dealing with only three teachers versus all of the elementary teachers. So just as a way to kind of fill in those holes and make sure that we're vertically aligned in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math. And make sure that we're supporting our teachers as much as we can as they're trying to create, not a math teacher, a reading teacher by trade. But I can't imagine how difficult that would be to create a new math curriculum and keep that vertically aligned at the middle school level. It's very challenging, so we want to support them in that way. And then also you'll have an approval later on in the agenda, but we are requesting AP textbooks. So they have not been updated in several years. So that's something that we're looking at doing for a few different courses. They are very costly, and so we are gonna purchase one classroom set and then divide that cost over four years so that we can help make that more affordable for the families because we know college textbooks are expensive. So being able just to keep a classroom set will at least keep that a little bit more affordable and then we still have the most up-to-date materials for our kids. So any questions?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I like camps in the summer, I like STEM camp.
Yeah. More fun than summer school. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And now the superintendent report, Mr. Gibbene.
Yep, so first things first, fairly soon we'll be announcing registration for next school year. And so for current students, it'll be July eleventh through the thirty-first. That'll be open online. There'll be in, a school messenger go out with that link so families can get registered for next school year. And for new students or students new to our school corporation, it'll take place on July twenty-first from ten, ten AM to seven PM. And that'll take place at the school those students would attend. And we encourage new student and their families to make appointments. So that way we can make sure that there's someone available to see them and to meet with them. And on top of that, we obviously, I don't know when that was last month, it seems like two months ago or three months ago, we just exited our audit with the State Board of Accounts. And so I believe that's been, that's now been posted publicly for anyone wishing to, to see the results. Excuse me, so continue, continue to do a good job with that and balancing the books and making sure we're, we're doing what we're supposed to, supposed to do appropriately. Yeah, so just an update on that. And then he stepped out for a minute, I think he had a long drive. But our, there he is. But our district is buzzing with construction at pretty much every building except this one. Although we have a garage full of supplies and technology. So the transportation center, we have our new maintenance building that's, that's going up. Walls and trusses and roof are up, and so we're making great strides there. And then at the three primary schools, they've, we're about, I don't wanna put a timeline on it, but they're, they're heavy into the secure entrance projects. And I, I don't know if you're talking about specifically that, but I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Monk, I'm ready to give us an update.
Hello, everyone. I don't know exactly how much time you'd like me to spend. I could spend a couple hours talking it all over or maybe ten minutes would be a good, good amount.
It's a beautiful night, Mike.
So we've got a few pieces of information to touch on tonight. One of them is a reminder of the budget and, cause it's, it's always good to know that it's holding and there's no surprises. So I can zoom in here a little bit. You can read it, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're okay on the budget.
You know, basically, nothing's changed. You know, we're, got the last bid package going out here, here literally in a few days. And that's gonna encompass the middle school renovation work, some additional work at TZ, Deer Meadow, and RidPath as well as the high school parking lot. So really, the, the next budget test is gonna be, see how those bids come in, in a few weeks here. And then I know that the next bond issue is planned. So to give you a little bit of a reminder of the scope of the work at the middle school, you can see the blue area is the renovation at the entranceway and the administration area. And a lot of that's because of the, the secure entrances that's being installed there. The pink area is the media center and, and library. And then the yellow area is the science labs. And the designs of all those are essentially complete and about ready to go out to bid. At the, at the main entrance, you can see some of the work that's going on there. Actually, I think I put in the wrong one, but it's, it's moving a lot of the staff across the hall and creating a new reception and secure entrance area there. Actually, that is correct. There, the, the area where it's reception is actually that hole in the roof. So it'll be roofed over and that was, we tried to resist any new square footage, but at the end result was this was the right way to do this particular project. This next one is at RidPath Elementary School. And I'll see, see if I can, well, I think I'll just talk about it a little bit. The, the, there's two pieces of work at RidPath. One of them is a secure entrance, which is under construction now. This last piece of work that's going out with this bid package is renovation or repair of the exterior EIFS, exterior insulation finish system, looks like stucco. It's really held up pretty well over the years, but there's one area, kind of the upper photograph, second from the right, that's delaminated a little bit. You can see it's, 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 it doesn't have an overhang, which is something you'll probably have to do this again every five, ten years because a particular product does a lot better when it's protected. And then the other area that's happened is down at the bottom, the mowers have hit it. So as part of this project, the EIFS is getting repaired and then we're taking a bid for a mow strip so that the guys don't, aren't attracted to trying to get too close to the building. So that's really the only work that's part of this project at RidPath. And then at Tazonicus, as you know, the, the contract has already been released. Patterson Horth is working on sealing the building up. And the upper right photograph, there's another one that's a little bit better coming on. Actually, there's, there were many gaps all the way around the perimeter of the building. They are spray foaming this, they're putting up sheet metal, aluminum sheet metal and spray foaming, and it's working great. They spray the foam and then after the foam goes up, they spray a fireproofing coating so that there's no burnable materials in the, in this area above the ceiling. And from the time they got it mostly done, you could, you could start feeling a difference. And just as a reminder, once they get done, TSI Energy is gonna come back and test the building again because they advised us it was so leaky that there's so many, they'll find more once they're able to pressurize the building. So we're, we're on the right track here with getting this taken care of. This is a reminder at RidPath Elementary, the secure entrance, which is the image in the upper right, is under construction now. It shows the office area floor plan. There actually, there's not a lot of work here. There's a new glass wall being, basically there is a glass wall that's being moved back so that the, the visitors actually come into the office. So they can't just walk straight into the building. It's pretty minor, but it is in process and the contractor's doing a good job. And all of this work, we were pretty nervous that none of it was gonna happen during the summer, but because we got a good bid and an aggressive contractor and it's working out that most of it's gonna get done this summer. At, at Deer Meadow, the lower right floor plan is just a kind of a reminder that that one was really set up pretty well. The only thing that really happens here is cutting in a door from the vestibule into the office and moving an exterior camera around for better, better visibility. So it was the least obtrusive. And then some of the new work that's going out with this, this bid. This is the floor plan of Tazonicus. And around the edges, you can, you can see the sidewalks. And early on in this project, we had theorized that some of the, some or a lot of the moisture in the building was a result of poor site drainage that was getting back because there weren't any gutters on the building, things like that. And then if you remember, there was kind of a study of four different areas. Groundwater through soil borings, underground storm sewers through sewer cams, the building pressurization, as well as checking the mechanical systems. And it turned out that the culprit was the, the leaky envelope of the building, which is being addressed. So we've gone back and really looked at what should you do now with the site? And what we really discovered was the site drains pretty well. All the pipes underneath are in good shape, it's on a hill. So I've through conversations with Mr. Gibbene and the owner's rep, Kramer Companies. The concrete's in good shape, you really just have a few areas there, and that's what we're taking care of as part of this. And you can see up there, just an example in pink, is the walk coming out of the gym door. At the bottom of the ramp, they get, they get water trapped there, so we're cutting in a swale and a, a perforated drain up there. The other pink, that's, the second one down, is a sidewalk and set of stairs that's kind of in bad shape. And it's gonna be rebuilt as part of this. The, the third pink area to the right is an area where the sidewalk, that goes into the special needs area that needs, needs some correction there. So those are the types of things that are going on with this, with this project. And then to go on with a few other photographs here. Oh, this is a better photograph of the foam that's going above the ceilings, sealing up the perimeter. And I think they're scheduled to be done with that now. They may already be, be done with that, so it's gone pretty fast. Some images of the exterior. In the upper right is the fascia and soffit at TZ. And this is an older photograph, you, you, on your own, you've replaced these light fixtures. So part of this project is going to be to paint that soffit. And the second photograph down on the right is the fascia, which doesn't show up very well, but the paint's really thinned out. So those are the types of things you've got an opportunity to do here that we're, we're including in the bid. The left two photographs just shows, was part of this going back and forth with, with Mr. Gibbene and the discussion of what should we do and what, what needs to be replaced. The upper left is that sidewalk coming out of the gym area that the water backs up under the door. The lower left is that set of stairs that's going to be replaced. You can't see it well from the photograph, but they're all kind of cockeyed and the railings are rusting. Oh, lower right is a glass block and frame into the gym. There's, there's a couple glass blocks that are actually broken and paint the frame. And the upper, upper right is really just an example of the quality of the concrete that's more typical at the building, actually. It's been really, pretty well kept up over the years. And then this is the high school parking lot. And the lower right is probably the more typical condition of the parking lot. The upper left is in the northeast corner where it's in pretty bad shape. And then you can also see the light pole base, the concrete's actually in pretty good condition. The heads of the light fixtures you've replaced not too long ago, maybe four or five years ago, but the poles are in bad shape. So this project, and the pole, they all burn, so the electrical is fine. So this project's gonna include removal and replacement of the poles and reuse of the heads and maybe an alternate for new heads. But in general, the biggest cost is staying in place and replacing the poles. And then the upper left, that particular area, the pavement is gonna be cut out and replaced all the way down to the base. But the rest of it is gonna be milled down about an inch and a half and then about two and a half inches put back, so it'll be up about an inch and a half on the curb because it's, it's not very thick. And if they mill it down enough and put and, and repair the deep cracks that go through that, that we'll have a nice new surface. It drains pretty well, it has good outlets in it, it's just cracked over the years and needs repaired. This is a site, a site plan of the parking lot. And in the upper.
Transfer lot.
Transfer lot. Well, this is the east.
No, that, I'm sorry, no, that's the parking lot.
Yeah, the, the east lot at, at the high school. And at the very top is Washington Street. And you can see there's a curb cut that's being added. And actually, the contractors put one in for a temporary so that the kids can get in and out. And that's actually been designed by the city prior to this project really starting to help with everything. So that's being priced by, the intention was for that, the, the city to partner on that. And then basically the parking lot gets milled down and restriped, that island down towards the bottom there that's. Right there, that's coming out. Everybody universally agrees it's more of a pain in the neck and everything. And then the striping's gonna run across up at the top so that there'll be cars parking. So you don't get that drive-through. There was a lot of discussion about that.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are we thinking about how students are getting out of there? Cause I know we have the temporary one right now and I understand that that's, it's gonna be permanent. But that's really congested in there when, when school lets out, so just something to think about.
Yeah, we'll have access off Percy, Julian, or Washington. There's no.
It gets, it just gets.
There's no best, but there's better. We're doing, we're working with what we can unless the state wants us, lets us punch out onto Veterans Memorial.
So this, the stairs on the left-hand side that go up from the parking lot are taking an alternate to rebuild those and put new railings up there also. And then one of the other kind of important topics here is towards the bottom, I'm gonna point here. Right in this area here. Last year, when the school was describing concerns and things to take care of, there's a general concern that that is the transfer lot or the, the north end of the transfer lot. there's a general concern that that is the transfer lot or the, the north end of the transfer lot. And when the buses are in there and all the kids are out transferring buses, there's not much to keep somebody who was so inclined to just drive down through there. And so this project would include barriers, electric barriers at the two locations shown here. And the base bid is going to be the lift arm. But we're going to take an alternate for these electric ballers that actually come up out of the ground on, with a remote, a control. If you, you know, you don't see a lot of them around here. I guess they're at Lucas Oil Stadium, which we can go look at and see and talk to them about how they operate. But you're not getting through these things. They're, they're heavy duty and they're designed for military installations in a lot of ways or heavy crowd control. And then also, there's going to be another set of them at the south end of the transfer lot. So you can contain that, that whole area, whole area through there. So is there any questions about any of that before I keep going here?
Did we tell our new middle school principal we were going to tear up her building before she came?
Yes, she didn't run away.
She didn't run away.
These are some images that I don't think you can fit everybody's. Can you hear me okay without?
Yeah, yeah.
But media centers, gone through the design process and our staff worked with the schools. I think everybody's pretty excited about how it's going along. Just thought I'd flash these up so you can kind of see some of the design drawings that we've been working on. He didn't have to go through the hard work at the time, he's just getting the benefit of.
Just the renovation part.
She gets to pick who, who gets a new classroom versus a non-renewed any classroom.
And you can see the floor plan. And some of the other areas are remodeling. It went backwards, but you can kind of see up in here, there's some remodeling of these areas, reorganization of that. And then there's three classrooms along here that fill in where the administration was. And so this area gets pretty significantly changed. And then the administration, a lot of ways, moves across the hall. Just a few views of some of the things we looked at. Office area.
It's nice having the nurses station have an exterior exit out of the building.
Did you get kind of a general feel of some of the color schemes that are going back with the new finishes? I doubt I spent too much time on each one. And then one of the other things, you don't have to like this yet, okay? But one of the things that we, we, we got into was, okay, what do we do at the, at that entrance of the middle school? And we started coming up with a variety of ideas, some good, some not so good. And then we kind of stepped back and said, okay, we need to draw an elevation of this entire campus. All the way from the west or south end of the middle school, all the way to the high school. Cause you got a lot that's going on at the connector piece of the high school. We've got an opportunity to kind of pull it together, including the existing south or east entrance to McAnally. So we've essentially got that completed and we're ready to kind of start talking with, to Mr. Gibbony with it. But along with that, a company called Sign Works is starting to work with the group to work on the overall branding and graphics. And we thought, we could come up with something here, but I think, we all agreed it would be better if it was all consistent with. And there's a lot of interior opportunities for that. And we do have about $250,000 plugged into the budget to, to do those types of things. So when you get all done, it's not just about the building, it's about branding and, you know, maybe have some school spirit to it and things like that.
So when you say we don't have to like it yet. Is that, is that the?
That's not the final one.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
It's a blend.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure if you were saying you'll learn to love it.
No, no. No, that's me saying I don't like it yet. You know, we, we go, probably like a lot of the debates you guys have, you know, where the first time they come up and go, no, this is not, no. And that's, that's when we realized that we were, we were just shooting in the dark. You know, we needed to have a consistent theme that had a reason to, to put purple on the outside of the middle school. Or maybe not, once we get done with the process. So that, that's what I mean, yeah.
Okay. Got it.
I might say that differently next time.
And then the last area, the science classrooms.
See on the right-hand side, the darker purple is the, the, you have four science class, well, really three, but the core area. One of them I think is a language room. Yeah, language arts or history, sorry. But the design that was worked out and preferred by pretty much everyone involved was to go to three rectangular rooms with a prep area in the center. And so all of the educational work can be done in the classroom rather than trying to move back and forth from, to a center lab. And it, it creates a little bit larger remodel project. Cause it takes that whole area, including the existing classrooms and remodels them. But ends up with a very usable space that I think everybody's pretty excited about. These are typical dimensions. Need casework, cabinetry going there. And if you remember some of the conversations about the high school, it's the same basic scope. All new casework, all new cabinetry, all new plumbing, all new, you know, it's basically new rooms. And then I think that might be pretty much the end of this. And then the, the last component that is being bid as an alternate. On, on the middle school, basically the systems are being reused. It's not a, a new infrastructure project. And that was the instructions that was, that's really this project. It's not an infrastructure project, except where we absolutely have to. Well, just a few weeks ago, our mechanical engineer had been going through it and they realized that the way the plan had shaken out, it would really be beneficial at this time if you could replace one of the main air handlers. And they estimated it was, I think, about $130,000. So we're taking an alternate for that. And it sets up on a mezzanine. Cause once all this is kind of torn apart, it's, it's the right time to do something like that if we, if we can afford it. So we'll be seeing that number when all the other numbers come in. And on the high school, it's, it's, it's moving along. Maybe you saw the south end of the gym was, or the east, the south end of the south gym was removed. You know, we've run into some obstacles, but the contractor's doing a pretty good job of overcoming them and, and moving on. So no, really no negative to report here.
I might add though, that you created a lot of phone calls for us when we uncovered the tiger and the old senior bench.
No kidding.
Good approach.
Have to work it out.
Alumni was all meeting in town too.
Social media.
It was beautiful to see it again after 15 years, I think it's been covered.
Yeah, we were surprised. Do you have any questions?
On the middle school end, and I know this is a pure guesstimate. When are we thinking about the science rooms and when is that construction?
We haven't even talked timeline because we haven't got the bid out now. Certainly that'll be the next thing as we'll discuss sequencing and phasing now that we have our new principal. And get to, get to help with that and, and work with staff through that, kind of like how we did the high school. But a lot of that's really going to depend upon the feedback that we give from the contractor as far as order, order of that. Certainly the science labs are going to be much more involved than, you know, some of the other areas. So we, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Mike, I may ask a question on the senior in the parking lot for construction. The, before you enter the field there. Is there anything we can do about the rocks and stuff that since you tore up the sidewalk? There's a lot of people, a lot of traffic sometimes that walks across that out there.
Yeah.
And it's, it's kind of a, I think, maybe a little bit of a safety factor. I know what, what you're thinking is on the.
You know, there's really, since it's going to be there a while, it's not very big. If, if it really is an issue, there's really no reason they couldn't put in a temporary piece of concrete sidewalk there.
I think it would help in the long run if we could do something.
We can look into that.
I know people will appreciate it.
Yeah, it's one of those things, on the plans, we didn't really give them a lot of information except said temporary entrance for, for construction. Well, that's what they put in. And I, I probably would have done the same thing if I was bidding it, you know, I'm trying to be below bidder. And now that we've lost it for a few months, it might, might benefit from a piece of concrete or asphalt or something like that.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good to see all of you. All right, some good stuff happening. All right, so next on the agenda is old business and there is none. So we'll proceed with new business. And first is the approval request, the, the appointment of Brittany Laphart, must say that right? To a four-year term on the Parks and Recreation Department Board.
I think it sounds great, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion passes. We have an approval request for the appointment of Jamie Neese to a four-year term to the Putnam County Public Library Board.
Salute.
I'll second.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We then have an approval request for standardized food contract. And that is.
They just supplier cleaning and sanitizing products and Debbie Carrico has recommended, made this recommendation. So, or recommend the board approve.
Salute.
I'll second.
All right, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is updated textbook rental fees for Green Castle High School.
Yep, so this just pertains to a few additional textbook purchases for some of our AP courses that were included in last month's text, textbook rental fees approval. So we were just wanting to update those to include those before we open registration.
You said that they were going to be for the classroom, do the students get to take them home?
No, they'll be, they'll be shared. So that cost will be divided out amongst a large group.
All right. Can we use a motion?
Salute.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that moves us to the 2022 transportation. And it looks like we have two. So uses of the buses for Prandola Express Camp, which is July 11th through the 15th. What do you do as both together?
Yeah, do them both together, yep.
And also you, the use of buses for the Putnam County Summer Nursery Program, which is about over. June, June 1st through July 1st.
Yeah, so both these programs make this customer request each year. We've been doing it for, I don't know however many years.
Yeah.
Somehow it just wasn't ever formally approved and so that's why we're seeking this approval.
Have you took in consideration the price of gas, I hope?
Best we can, yes.
That's a bad question.
Yeah.
And I think they, it might understand that buses are driven by some employee at the school district.
Our employees, yep, and then we're reimbursed costs.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second to approve both, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then we have an approval request for Special Education Services. That's the 20, 2022, 2023 Line and Mow Vision Services contract with Paula Bernstein. And then there is the 2022, the 2023 Assistant School Psychologist Contract with Jamie Landry.
Yep, so these are all especially positions that Mrs. Solomon has, has recommended. The Assistant School Psychologist Contract, that's due in part to Dr. Ayet, working towards retirement and wanting more fewer days. And so this will keep Dr. Ayet on board, but allow someone to help fill in some of the gaps. And this will actually be able to reduce costs to the district for what we pay for during the 21, 22 school year.
Can I make a motion for approval?
I'll second.
All right, with a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. And well, we've had a lot of good information this meeting. This is always one of the, the best parts. But, so we have an approval request for donations. There is Putnam County Community Foundation to Green Castle High School Band in the amount of $712.11. Snap Mobile Inc. to Green Castle High School Track and Field fundraisers in the amount of $3,580. And West Central Solid Waste District to Green Castle Middle School Kitchen in the amount of $400.
With a hefty thank you, I make a motion to accept them.
Second.
All right, so a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And anybody opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, I know, I know. What? All right, and so we do have other business?
Yep.
So, Mr. Gibbony?
Yep, so seeking approval of the high school intercom clock refresh project through New Era Technology. And it costed $94,137. We currently work with New Era on our current PA system and bell system. And so again, this was in the larger projects and as, as a line item. And so I'm just seeking approval to move forwards. With that, we did invite three vendors to bid, but ultimately only New Era submitted a final bid.
Well, it's kind of already in, but it's an amount we have to approve. I'll make a motion that we approve.
It's not in, no, they haven't done the work yet.
No, 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 I mean like it was in the initial thought process that we were going to do.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anybody opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, well, if there are any other comments? All right, well then, that brings us to adjournment. So we just need to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, hey, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome, yeah. Yep.